I'll offer a prayer and then I'll ask you to stand with us for the pledge. Lord, it's a good morning. It's morning to come before you and give thanks. Lord, it's a time of reflection, a time to look forward. And we just have so much that we can be thankful for. In this great country we live in, in the state we live in, and here in the county. And Lord, I'm grateful this morning for the two gentlemen to my right. I've had the privilege to serve with for a few years. And I've got to know them, they've got to know me. Lord, they certainly deserve a medal for putting up with me for the length of time that they have. But Lord, I am confident. I am confident that they have faithfully served the citizens here in Lakewood County. They have stood here before the people around this table and made decisions, Lord, that hopefully will have a great impact on our community for years to come. And Lord, that's just in addition to the daily decisions that are made. But there's been some good long-term decisions made here. And I'm grateful for their patience, their integrity, their sense of purpose, and their devotion to the camp. And Lord, I look forward to working with the commissioners-elect as we take up the business that will come before us on Thursday and as we go forward. So, Lord, I just have so much to be thankful for. But most importantly, for your son, Jesus, and for what he did for us on the cross. And we just thank you, and may everything we say and do today bring honor and glory to your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Darryl, thank you for the donuts. What I'd like to do is, I'm gonna move to item number one, and we'll come back and grab the minutes. I have something I'd like to read, and then I'd like to present to my two fellow commissioners an award. But this is "The Man in the Arena," and it's by Teddy Roosevelt. And I've seen this before, and I just really appreciate it. And I think it speaks greatly to the gentlemen that have served here. And I want to give them the recognition that they deserve. And it goes like this. "It is not the critic who counts, not the one who points out how the strong man stumbled, or how the doer of deeds might have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred with sweat and dust and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs and comes short again and again, who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, and spends himself in a worthy cause; who, if he wins, knows the triumph of high achievement; and who, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who know neither victory nor defeat." And I think that speaks greatly of both of you. I've enjoyed this, and I'd like to kind of go back and reminisce just a little bit, and I'll do it quickly. You know, 2020 was COVID, right? And we were tasked with the responsibility of administering nearly $4 million in COVID funds, right? And we took that very seriously. We really took that upon ourselves. We had confidence that we would be able to justly and rightly divide those funds in a way that it would best serve our community. And so we took that task upon ourselves. We distributed those $4 million, I think, in a very way that touched lives throughout all of our community. We were tasked with that with a background knowing that there were some who wanted to shut down government, who wanted to shut down business. And we stood up to that task as well, and we let common sense prevail. And we said, "The essential worker, who is that?" you know? And while others were wanting to shut down small businesses and mom and pops, we said no, didn't we? Yeah. And we were right. And so as part of that distribution of those funds, we recognized the importance of those small businesses in our community. We distributed a little over $1 million of that $4 million to help keep their doors open. We also distributed approximately $1 million to nonprofits here in the community who served our neighbors that needed maybe a little extra at that time. We also distributed about $1 million to schools. Schools were impacted in a way at the time that many of us really probably couldn't fully understand then, but we know today. And then we also invested in our coworkers here by retention funds in law enforcement. We know that the road deputies, we know that the commission staff, we know that those in the jail, we know those that worked in 911. We needed to retain those workers at that point in time. And I'm very proud of what we accomplished with that. And then comes along ARPA funding. And we were tasked, in addition to the normal budget that we've overseen and made allowances for the different services that we provide that county residents want and expect and deserve. But we were tasked with that. And again, we took it upon ourselves, we accepted the challenge, and we said, "We will invest that for the long-term benefit of Lakewood County." At first, we didn't know how we were going to do it because of the way the rules were written. But as those rules were clarified, we recognized the need that we could use those funds for, and that's the new 911 service, the new 911 building. And I think we can be proud of how that building came up out of the ground, how it will stand there for decades to come and serve Lakewood County. That's maybe some of the highlights. But what we know is that as we just sit here every day and make decisions, I believe that both of you had the best interest of those who put you in those chairs. You had their interests at heart, and I witnessed that day after day, week after week, and month after month. So, I'm gonna miss you guys. Sometimes we're like brothers or family. We might squabble a little bit. That's what brothers do.
I'm used to, I was a middle kid, so I'm used to getting beat up.
So, but we were able to always come together and do what we felt like was the best thing for Lakewood County. So, I have something I'd like to give. And this is a saying, I need to turn it around the right way. But Darryl, I'd like to present you with this, and this is "The Man in the Arena." And it's presented to Darryl Pollak in appreciation of your dedication to the citizens of Lakewood County, excuse me, as Western Commissioner, 2016 to 2024. So, Darryl, I'd like to personally give that to you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Randy.
You're welcome, Darryl. And David, I have one for you, and it's presented to David Lehman in appreciation of your dedication to the citizens of Lakewood County as Eastern Commissioner, 2020 through 2024. And I'd like to give that to you. And those have special effects, by the way. On the bottom, they're actually alive. That was a little extra bonus. Gentlemen, I thank you, and if you have any words you'd like to say, then...
I will. I'll jump in here. I've been fortunate to serve with two presiding commissioners, Danny Rhodes for the first two years, and Randy here with the last six. And there was been a couple folks in the eastern chair as well. So, it's been good. Appreciate... Everybody has their unique things that they bring to the commission. And that's what makes it cred, I think, is that we just take all of these differing ideas and try to formulate some way to get a decision that we can all try to participate in and make it as good as possible as we can. And that happened in the... Those were lean years, those first two. I don't know how that, they're still lean, but I can tell you that I really enjoyed working with Danny. We were friends before this, and we're still friends. And I knew Randy a bit, but not in great detail, working with Randy very much. And he is a thorough information guy, wants it all in some kind of format to where you're working from something, and you've got something to check to see how you're doing along. You can check these progresses. I'm not that guy. I'll just tell you. I work from, I make a quick decision. I think it was from being in the grocery store business for 18 years. If you sat there and thought about it very much, the lettuce expired. You know, something went down. You had to throw it away or do whatever it was. So, I was quick in making decisions and taking the best information I had and moving forward with it. Randy is more detail-oriented, and you will find, as new incoming commissioners, that there's work that's been done that you will benefit greatly from because there are information and spreadsheets and details. All of that stuff is at your fingertips now. You can determine... We did have a somewhat, when did the last time somebody grade the road? And it was kind of loosely, and but it was done. You could go back and check it. But now you can go into detail of what was done on the road. And that's an improvement. That is a way better measurement of what you're doing and what are the taxpayers getting for the taxes that they're paying. So, you feel confident, and you're also, it works all the way through the system, not just here for information, but even the guy that's out there running the equipment, he gets it too. And that's Randy. And David came in with his knowledge right on top of that from being his work history. And it just, it's gone. And that was one of the best things that I feel like we've done. And then not only that, and bringing a full-time assistant into the commission has been another... It had to be. There was so much volumes of information that was being planted into this that you had to have somebody that could potentially work that information. So, Leanna, thank you for the work that you've done for the years that you've been here. She's invaluable. But I won't miss working with synonyms called PPP and ARPA and PILOT. I mean, all of the stuff that went along in these last four years. That has been a major challenge of how to have these dollars that were, and here you are. And you have to figure out how you're gonna do them, and the best way you do them, and very little guidance, really too much on it. And we did it in a way that we felt like that this is our money, this is how we would spend it at the kitchen table. And that's how we did it. And it was a lot of work. There's a lot of times we met that I thought, "This is a lot more than I think any county commission should be meeting." We met, we met, we met. We worked through it, at long hours and a lot of that. It was a lot of... There was good through it, a lot of good. There was a lot of hard times through that. You know, there was some of our friends and family members that succumbed to that virus. And it was not good. It was hard. But I enjoyed it. It's eight years. The eight years at the State House and eight years at the courthouse. I don't know if the outhouse has eight years or not, but I don't know what the next house will be. Probably at my house, but anyhow, it's been a good time. And I appreciate the opportunities to serve. And, you know, you're out in the public, and they don't really understand what a commissioner does, really. They just really, it's just like, if your road is not right, then that's what the commission does. And there's a lot involved with that. But roads are a part of what we do. And we get the most, and that's probably the most thing that we get the biggest responsibility of from taxpayers. But it is a, it's an ongoing thing. You're either maintaining it, or you're preparing to re-maintain it. And it continues and continues and continues. Some of the good things that I felt like that, over this last several years, since COVID, actually, costs of things have just gone up. You know, everybody understands that. If you go, if you buy, if you're participating in the economy, you realize costs are high. And they're high to the county as well. And being able to navigate through and keep good equipment out at the Road and Bridge Department, keep the greater leases going to the nine that we have. And those leases going from $25,000 to $26,000 eight years ago to $55,000, $60,000. And who knows? It could have been higher than that. But you have to make decisions along the way to be able to keep them affordable. And so going from three-year leases to five-year leases. To be able to do that, I don't know what it looks like going forward. It's just a lot of funding, a lot of money to keep those things. And those decisions were made, and we've done that. So, I appreciate it. Randy, thanks for the words. And I consider these guys, I think you could call them, and they would assist you in a time of need. And so I appreciate that, the opportunity to call you guys fellow commissioners and friends. So, thank you. Appreciate you.
I don't know how to follow that, but anyway. You know, I just reiterate what Darryl said. I don't think I could serve with a couple people that I could have picked any better. So, it's just been a great run, and I think we've held our own. Just continue the job. So, thank you guys.
I mentioned Linda, and as I You gotta have that person at the end to let you know you can't have, can't hobble any of that money. And this is what you can spend, and this is what you've got. Keeps you in the vault.
She's the one that keeps reminding me that you might not want to do that.
Financial officer is very important, very, very important.
Well, guys, thank you both. And I trust that you're out in the community that others will share their appreciation for you. Now, it's the last day of the year. We've got a lot of work to do, and I want to keep you guys here as long as I can. So, let's dive in. I'm still gonna put the minutes off for a minute because we've got a real tight agenda today. We've got newly elected officials. At 9:30 and 10:30, we have our public hearing for our 2025 budget for public input. And we have just some general county business, but probably along with that, making the final decisions on ARPA, and we have a few of those to go through. But in trying to be respectful and recognize everyone's time, I'm going to, and this does feed into... And is there anyone, there's no one here on the bid opening, so I'm gonna hang off on that for a minute. But Steve, I'm gonna call on you from Conway Special Road. I know you have something that you want to give to us, so...
Just one bid.
One bid, okay. I'll give that to David. And you received that prior to 8:30 this morning, I'm sure, because you were here before 8:30, so, okay. David, we'll go ahead and open that. And then what we'll do, Steve, we're gonna put that in the mix with everything else we'll be discussing here in a little bit. And then one of us will let you know our decision, because we've got eight, 10, 12 things we've got to look at and get all those numbers crunched to see how we come out on the final.
The bid is from Herring Concrete and Construction. Tear out demo, 120 feet of wall. Top and steel and footing for the floor. Comes up to $36,200.
And Steve, if you'd like to give us any background on that.
Some of the Brasker Drive, anyway, Brasker Drive ends up connecting between CC Highway and J Highway. Early rule, as far as that goes. Apparently, that low die estimates that bridge should be stone walls and it's a low limit for each day. But what we're proposing will have no weather in the line. Current bridge is single line.
All right. You have any questions while Steve's here? And then we'll put this with the rest of our items we have to consider before we commit those remaining funds.
Steve, what the timeframe that they've committed to on this?
Well, it really depends on the weather. Ideally, don't want to be any before the end of February because of the cold weather aspect of it.
Just making sure we understand it's got to be in '25.
Oh, yeah, it'd be in '25, ideally March, April. It's also one of us route. So, it's gonna be closed out for minimum 30 days. It may be wait till the end of September, so done on the last one.
Steve, I'd like to tell you that I appreciate the way that Conway Special Road District is run. And just, we don't get to see a lot of the ins and outs. But what we get to see monthly and how things have been done down there since I've been here, it's done very well. I'd like to make that publicly announced, that it's much appreciated, the way that you handle, the way that you do your business there.
I'll definitely second that, Darryl. You're doing a great job.
Okay. So, Steve, one of us will let you know something here by the end of the day. Thank you again.
Thanks, Steve.
Next item, we'll go ahead and go back to bid opening for Road and Bridge Furnace. And I think we had one there.
Steve, December the 30th. Multi-craft contractors. 175 BTU waste oil heater.
Do you have that shirt just like that? Looks better on you, though.
Appreciate it.
This looks to be a complete install. 47, 147.
And that wasn't the low BTU rating, that was the price?
That was the price. Yeah, it wasn't the BTU rating.
Well, I like that.
But it also includes a tape.
I would entertain a motion to table that one for further discussion.
Make a motion to table that bid for further discussion.
We will take a look at that and see. I know there's a sense of urgency that we get something done, but that seems a little... Mike, you want to take a look at this, or are you familiar with it already? Okay. And Mike's handed his quotes on a request for some other heating units there at Road and Bridge. And these will be discussed with, along with the remaining items on the ARPA final. And if you want to share anything with us on these, Mike, are they pretty self-explanatory?
They should be pretty self-explanatory.
You got a question? Which one do I go by?
Well, so when I got the quote, David, I also quoted replacing the natural gas heaters as an option. So, one is a natural gas heater, and one is the mini split. So, this bottom one on the quality is the mini split. And that is a single 200,000 BTU.
My question here is, this is 4,000, this is 34,000.
Yep, this is from Henderson's, that one.
Oh, oh, that was two different ones. Geez, that is looking off the page yet. Thank you.
Okay. Mike, did you have anything else on those heating units?
Don't believe so, Randy. I'm probably gonna say it depends on how the decision goes with those quotes because I believe one of them did not include plumbing the hookup, shut the gas up. So, that would be an extra expense. That would have to...
You want to go ahead and call that out to our attention while you're here?
So, Henderson will not connect the gas, and quality will.
Have you had that conversation with them?
About them?
You said they wouldn't connect it.
Yeah, it's in their quote.
Or is it they won't connect it, or they're not providing any?
They said that we would have to hire a plumber to have it connected.
And then both are indicating that we will be responsible for the high voltage wiring. Is that what it looks like? One says no high voltage power. The other one says high voltage wiring break that will need to be supplied to the heat pump. So, we'll be responsible for that in both cases.
Kind of look at them that way, Randy.
Okay. So, we can take that into consideration as we...
Just to look at it, one's a two ton, and one's a one and a half ton. Just to look at it, one's a two ton and one's a one and a half ton, also, you understand?
Pretty efficient, seventeen C or anything?
Mm-hmm.
Well, Mike, it's gonna be cold next week. Did uh, did maintenance get uh, I understood he?
He got us one go.
We, we made one out of two?
Yes.
Okay.
Literally.
Okay.
Took parts off one to get the second.
Okay, and uh, found the gas leak, got that fixed, and.
Shut off.
Got it shut off, okay. So maybe we can put a Band-Aid on this for a week or two, that we get some, something over there for you.
Wait, the weather's lucky, we'll be there quite frequently, so.
Stoking the fire, putting a lot of wood in?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, alright. Any other questions on those uh, those proposals?
Make a motion to table this and conjunction with the other, and have a discussion.
Yeah, we'll go through all this here after the, probably after the public, public hearing, then we'll. The way I look at it, I've gotta keep you here at four o'clock. Alright, uh, and then, Mike, did you have anything else you were presenting, you had previously distributed, the requests, those storage containers? Is that still something you are asking us to consider?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, I'll put that in that stack.
What are the questions, Mike? What BTU are we replacing for, what on each one is?
I don't know what those are, they won't. But both, both companies, even on the place, all measured the building.
So is the warm sufficient for that?
Yeah.
Okay. That'd be so much more efficient than what that dinosaur out there is.
Oh, yes.
Alright, gentlemen, I'm gonna jump back up and let's do approval minutes. I have the minutes from Dec- thanks, Mike, December tenth and December eleventh here in front of me. And I would ask for a motion to approve, because you've had a chance to look at them.
Motion to approve.
Second, I have motion, second, approve the minutes for December tenth and eleventh. It's presented, being for the discussion, seeing not only favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Ten minutes approved. Okay, so we've got uh, Eric, you and Joe, if you wanna go down there early. Uh, you, you wanna hang out here with us for a few minutes, it's five after nine.
Is that part of the ball?
No, 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 I just didn't know if you had family, or if you had something planned down there that, that you wanted to visit with or hang out with, so.
Long ranger, is that?
You're a long ranger, okay, alright, well, we'll just, we'll just keep moving on then. Uh, and we'll stop here then about nine twenty-five or so, and, and uh, we'll come down and join you. Um, next thing I would entertain is uh, discussion on ARPA final uh, allocations. Uh, do you have your sheets in front of you, and I think those are really rough drafts at this point. Um, but do you have any of those? We've been making notes on, it looks like Daryl has his. I've got to, you, put some pieces here. Why don't you make us a couple of copies of that? And we'll all work from this angle, thanks for that.
The used oil heater was quite a bit higher, for sure.
I'm glad you had a, a spoken amount, or one that was, I don't know, maybe that was a local, I don't remember. Steve, what do you guys heat with over special line?
Propane.
Propane.
Yeah. It's reliable and barring the Mississippi or does that major earthquake, we're gonna be lacking for natural gas. Everything we get here comes from us. We're staying with the old reliable.
I guess we are too, as long as we have trees. Thank you. So after our last meeting, uh, I think we had, uh, we hadn't received the final uh, invoice from DeWitt. And after we uh, looked at that, uh, we did uh, recalculate and um. So if you, if you look at that list, the known items, and a couple of these are rounded up. Um, and then one of them I need to change the value on, but uh, we had put in there twenty-five thousand for the audit. We had, uh, we've already approved the roof for seventy-five thousand. We approved the building for one fifty-five. Uh, a patrol vehicle, and I put fifty-five in my notes, it may be fifty-six or so. And we'll get some actual uh, numbers here uh, before the end of the day. The signage, we approved those yesterday, and those are at um, at fifteen thousand, not, not to exceed fifteen thousand. Um, the nine-one-one uh, doors down here, the automatic opener on those. That proposal's been accepted, and it was a little less than twelve thousand. Uh, we put on there a special choose request. And we had initially put thirty-five thousand, if we consider it, it's thirty-six thousand two hundred. Um, and I think if you had those numbers up, you're gonna be about three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And that's gonna leave us about uh, probably a little over a hundred thousand that we have to uh, consider. Along with the uh, the Conway. One of the suggestions, I think we had tossed out previously was um. If we wanted to use any of that balance to uh, help offset uh, the cost of purchasing one of the graders that are coming off lease. Um, I, I'm gonna put that out there, but I'm gonna have some thoughts, personal thoughts on that myself, so. Uh, but that was a item that, that if we, if we consider it. Um, those graders coming off lease, I think, Leanna, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're about a hundred and sixty grand. And um, that'd leave us with a balance of about a hundred grand to come up with. I don't know what the value of that uh, that uh, grater is that we own, in the condition that it's in. We can use some of that to help with the uh, the proceeds from that sale to help offset that. And of course, it has to be looked at a budget item uh, in the twenty, twenty-five budget. So I don't, that's still something you wanna consider personally. Um, I've, I've asked Leanna to run some numbers for me, and uh, it's gonna be my recommendation that we don't even own a grater. Uh, so I'm gonna toss that in and uh, let you guys uh. Counter that, and so, point being, if we wanna, if we wanna keep that included, or whether we wanna take that off the table. I think that's the big item in there that's gonna help us get to the bottom line here by the end of the day. Uh, and, and my reasons for this is, we spent uh, since we've owned it, we've, we've already have about forty-nine thousand dollars in repair. The anticipated repairs quoted at forty-one thousand. If you look at the hours of usage, they, they dwindled. And if we, and if we do look at the hours of usage, I'm looking at that, I'm saying, I can't. It's hard for me to understand that grater being on the road twenty weeks out of the year, because that's what the hours say. I know the, the meter hours and the hours on the road are different, but it just seemed like it come in kinda, kinda high, so.
We did use that as a backup.
One that we, yeah, two, two years, okay. So it was out there a fair amount, but um. I, I, I think there's ways to manage that my, myself, but anyway, I'm, I'm. This year, because it probably wasn't um.
Those would be true project hours for this year.
And that was about a hundred and seventy-nine hours, I think, yeah.
I don't blame leaving that on our list, but I, I think we need to see the rest of our list and. How it best fits for long-term gain, I mean, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see, if not that way, then which way, and how would that funds then be implemented?
Okay, then, then that's what we, that's what we gotta roll up our sleeves and, and get to work on, so. So I'll open with that, and I'll open it up to suggestions on what you might consider for those remaining funds then.
What was the total we were getting?
I, I had, if you, if you say three seventy-five.
With Rob, and, and what, what do we have to appropriate?
After the three seventy-five. About a hundred grand. About a hundred grand.
And then, then we would be looking at.
About four seventy-five.
These things that we talked about this morning with the shop and, that come out of that potentially?
Correct.
Okay. So depending on either one of those scenarios with uh, with the, the heaters, were the same amount, dollar amount. We just gotta determine which pass we wanna do with it, right? And that seventy-two hundred or seventy-two hundred look like?
Yeah, yeah, that seemed to me like pretty, pretty straightforward on that, so as we, as we funnel on down, um.
Seventy-two hundred here, and if it was a uh.
More Bruce.
I think we had uh, under a quote for a storage building was fifty-seven sixty.
Well, you had two.
Or you have others?
Well. How many you wanna buy?
Yeah, well, he would like two, but I, I know he'd take what he can get, so. So you can get two of them for, looks like ninety-one hundred.
What size?
Uh, forty-five. And those are delivery setup.
So what was one?
Well.
Fifty-five or fifty-three, fifty-five?
Yeah, fifty-three, fifty-five.
Bruce, is there anyone out there? Misses?
Yeah, it's dry right now.
One forty-foot used, that may be what it is.
Used, there's thirty-three hundred.
Calling it as most as much as the building is, all that it used. I know at the beginning, he's, he would like that too, but um. Like everything, sometimes we can afford one, or you can make do with one.
Then one of the other uh, considerations that we have was the ability to uh, move um, the remaining balance into payroll. So that's uh, that's an additional thought there. And then uh, Mike had gotten us a price, Mike Cheek had on the uh, the flag to re, to uh, replace. So the damaged flag, and, and if you probably put in about four grand there, and that's a uh, that's a different material than what we had. Should be a little uh, better able to withstand some of the wind and some of the, some of the tears out there that we've, we've incurred.
How much was the flag each year?
It's, it's, it's right there. Freight would probably push it up close to the, to the four grand.
If you're looking to spend some of that money, my budget last year, I asked for about a hundred forty thousand equipment, and I didn't get any of it. And I've not seen, my office has not seen one single penny of this ARPA time.
I haven't seen any need for your office to see ARPA funding.
PPE, personal protective equipment.
I think we got all that done through emergency management, all of the.
Seen anything.
All the mask and all of those things that were needed for hand sanitizers that were available.
Yeah, well, that didn't cover boots and stuff, we had to buy a pair of boots out of my supplies, because we didn't have covers. That was asked.
We had lots of covers.
No, we don't.
I don't, I didn't see the need to have a, a suburban for your use, a new suburban. I still would never see that use being a, a good wise use of taxpayer funds.
Until one.
So the hundred and some thousand had a biggest shot of, out of that was a brand-new suburban.
Yeah.
For a.
Quite honestly, would the sheriff let somebody take a gun from the scene of a homicide, put it in your vehicle and let you transport it to the sheriff's department? No.
Well, uh, most of the time on those scenes, the sheriffs took, uh, they, they were the uh, the authorities on the scene, so. I think most of the time, that's what we were uh. Following the lead of the sheriff on those.
And to become a deputy now, it's seven hundred hours. You know how much death investigation they get on seven hundred hours?
I wouldn't know, Steve, it's not my.
Eight hours.
It's not my cup of tea, it's not my, my uh.
So you're letting somebody that knows nothing to my office, take what happens in my office.
I've looked, I've looked at your budgets for eight years that I've been here.
Yeah. And one criminal gets off, that'll all change.
Maybe uh, maybe we need to, Steve, I know we'll have budget hearings start next week, and I think we've got you scheduled, so. Maybe we need to hold off the conversation until that point. Things, things can still be considered. Um, you know, so if you had a uh, a uh, if you wanted to prepare a, a, I'm gonna suggest a modest list. Uh, and get it back to us before, before one o'clock. Um, and can you determine whether that's in the best interest, investing your time? But if you wanna do that, I'll make that recommendation. If not, I think we hold the discussion for uh, next week, when we dive into twenty twenty-five. And there'll be two new commissioners here that, that will uh, be part of that process, and we'll, we'll take a look at it again. So, but I think at this point, it doesn't help if we don't have a specific modest request from you. Um, and whether that would be honored, Steve, I'm not gonna commit to that, but I'll certainly accept that.
So this is in what dollar amount?
Well.
There's lots of requests.
There, there are, Steve, and, and maybe if I could uh, redirect that back to you and put it in, in need. Okay, I think that'd be the best way I could say that. You know, what's, what's the biggest need, is it, is it PPE, you know, uh? And uh, and if it's a modest request, then I'll, I'll give you a chance to have it reviewed here by the, by the commission.
I'll have your list by one o'clock.
Okay.
Number one down, and number one will be priority down the list.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at it when you bring it over. Okay. So I've got just a few minutes, Bruce, I'll recognize you as a, as a coworker here for a minute. Is there anything you came over for? Just wanna.
Obviously, it is.
Okay. Alright.
Bruce, thank you.
Yeah, and then uh, Noah, is there anything, two or three minutes, or just kinda came to see where we're?
And they're changing of the guard.
Changing of the guard, okay, well, you're in about ten...
Well, I know what we discussed a couple of weeks ago, or three weeks ago. And I just thought it'd come back and see him, because we're gonna be dealing with some of the commissioners now.
Yeah.
Watch that one right behind you. You know what they say about the guys with the big hats.
Alright, uh, so Jack, the, and I think you were here when I mentioned it, but at uh, we're gonna step out here in just a couple of minutes to witness the uh, swearing in of the new elected officials. We'll uh, we'll come back probably by ten guys, do you think, you'd be ready to come back by ten, you know? Okay, so we'll uh, we'll start back in here at ten. And then we'll take up uh, just some general county business. I've got a couple of tax refund requests. And then at ten-thirty, we have a public hearing for budget. Don't know if anybody will be here or not, but we will give opportunity there. And if nobody shows up, we will continue to work on the ARPA balance. Uh, and if somebody shows up, then we will uh, step back from that and then listen to their comments about budget. And then we'll probably break about noon or so for lunch. And then we'll come back here at one and uh, maybe whatever decisions we made before then, we get some numbers tabulated and then we can, we can finish this off after we get back here at uh, at one. And that'll give, give you a chance to, you know, work in your office and, and whatever you want to do to, for that. And then Eric and Joe, if you have any questions, I've got a packet, I've got some things I want to give to both of you. We are gonna have a meeting Thursday at eight-thirty, it's posted online already. And I've got a packet I need to give to each of you for that. So we're gonna hit the ground running Thursday on some, some things. Okay, and then uh, and then once we, uh, once we convene on Thursday, we're gonna stay he, stay here in session until uh, January seventeenth. Uh, next week, there's already uh, appointments made with the office holders and department heads regarding their budgets. So that'd be pretty, pretty much all next week. And uh, and we'll see how that following week. Uh, we won't have to be here necessarily every hour of every day, but we'll be here some part of every day during that, that timeframe.
You have a schedule made up, it's in that packet or...
Not in that packet, I'll ask me and uh, to get that to me. And I've got a, I've got a file for each of you and we'll stick it in there and let them have that, anything else we think of, okay? Okay, alright, I think we'll just stop here, hit the pause button and walk down there and, and uh...